Jason, I think they came in useful today.
All right, Bannock County Board of Commissioners is now in session. We do have one amendment to our agenda. We'll talk about planning and zoning at the end of this session.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the amended agenda as presented.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The first item is an ambulance claim.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we enter into the Board of Ambulance.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's refunds on the ambulance. Any concerns? Motion?
I move that we approve the refunds and exit the Board of Ambulance.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have Commissioners invoices. Looks like invoices and invoices. A couple of questions. And I just barely read through these. This is mileage, but I wasn't sure how it was submitted.
Oh, this is for, oh, this one didn't come through me. We can hold this. I don't know why she, this is our part-time victim witness coordinator. I don't know why she took her own vehicle.
Okay.
Probably because...
And there's one more right there.
It's probably because in the past we have allowed Tamela to take her own vehicle because she has said no. So she probably just did. But I don't know that we did with Tamela and David Mistake, he had a lot of claims this time.
Okay, and it's a conversation piece we need to have.
I talked with them about that yesterday and told them that they, in the future, they need to take county vehicles when they're, when possible, then it's an easy process. But I had that conversation yesterday with that whole group.
This is just that final, we needed that final bill for FY 23.
Okay, that's why I wasn't sure which.
Yeah, that was FY 23. Kyle was trying very adamantly to get that in for this year because we haven't gotten it yet.
We pay all of that through the grant, right?
It's through the Snowmobile Fund. Oh, no, this is on the...
This is the first one. We pay her mileage through the Domestic Violence Grant, right?
This was victim witness. Let me see the coding again, please.
Then the other one is plowing the snowmobile parking lot. We haven't plowed for a while, so...
And no, this was prosecutors. It was the victim witness coordinator. They've got a special line item for all of their training. And if you want, I can hold that until we find out why. She asked for mileage as opposed to taking a county vehicle. My guess is she didn't know that she had to. But that department should have informed her when she went for training.
As long as she's been informed and you've had a conversation with her, I mean...
Well, I had a conversation with the entire group yesterday. But I can go have a personal discussion with her also.
Then it's on the bill, we can just pay it, make it go through.
And I'll remind David that they need to be pre-approved.
Well, this is our final payment for this year, so I'd just soon get it on this year's budget, or last year's budget. All right?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the invoices as presented.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have one salary rate approval form.
So that's our approval form is for October 1. D6 was given a senior treatment counselor and also a case manager. To be a senior treatment counselor, you have to have two years of experience because you supervise interns. They only had one individual within their office that qualified for this position. So Ashley promoted that individual instead of opening it up for applications within the office because there was only one individual that qualified. That was why she had to submit the letter for an exceptional placement because she didn't open it to the other people in the office. The next closest person that would have qualified has only been in the office one year. So she really doesn't meet the criteria. So while it's an exceptional placement, it's only an exceptional placement because she didn't advertise and interview multiple people.
Yeah, with the letter, I didn't see that it was pre, or posted in the budget for the way it looked. And if it wasn't posted in the budget, it wasn't going to happen.
And no, it is 100% just a new position in the office. And then what she'll do is advertise for the treatment counselor and replace that position. I'm not sure if Ryan misunderstood that. He had some concerns within an email going back and forth as to the situation.
And that's what the note was here too, so it's a little concerned.
Yeah.
And we've, I discussed that with Ryan also yesterday and then with Ashley, Kristy and I over the course of the last day, so...
Okay, any comments, questions?
Nope. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary approval form as presented.
Have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then this is the annual recurring that was missed?
That was a miss.
I mean...
That is for FY 24, the recurring. And so those are the ones that you sign this way so that we don't have individual invoices. There's a monthly, quarterly, semi-annual, and annual where we make these payments. It's a special bonus commission report for you to do the final approval. But again, these are individual invoices to make the payments.
So clarification is this is for next year, or this year's budget? Most on that one?
Mr. Chair, I move, what is that again?
Reoccurring expenses for 24.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the reoccurring expenses as presented.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have payroll.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the payroll report as presented.
Have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then, on this section, we have alcohol licenses. I'm glad you put those on a form like this.
I say, that's a pile of them there. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the alcohol licensing as presented.
We have motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
What happened to Mr. Solomon?
He was sitting outside, he's still out there thinking, seeing, he wants to grab a break and see if he's available.
Come on up. Anybody with your group that can sit up here, more than welcome.
Want Solomon here, Commissioner?
That's fine. If they're going to participate and say anything, they need to be up here and introduce themselves.
All right. Thanks for letting us come.
You bet. Go ahead and introduce yourselves.
We're sort of putting things together here. Do we have the PowerPoint?
Yeah, it's here in the...
Okay, so we're not going to have that digitized? Do we have that up?
Uh, no. I do have handouts.
Okay.
I don't need one.
Do you all have a handout now? Yes. All right.
Is there another one of these for kids?
No. Well, thanks for letting this, thanks for letting us come. Tim Solomon, Regional Business Manager for Pacificor, covering this section of Idaho. And with me, I have a whole bunch of folks, and I'm going to let them introduce themselves. This will actually do some introductions as we walk through the PowerPoint, Commissioner, if that's okay. We'll make sure we're talking to the mics. Do you want us to get our address in the record? Okay, all right. Well, I'm going to turn it to Rachel. All right.
Hi, good morning. My name is Rachel Roberts. I am the project manager for Segment E of the Gateway West project beside me.
I'm Roger Jensen, also Senior Project Manager on the Segment E project, which goes from Populus over to Hemingway Substation over by Boise area.
Jeff.
Jeff Lefucci with Idaho Power Facility Siding Coordinator.
Yeah, Nate Murray, also representing Idaho Power.
Alita Brown with Pacificor. I am the project manager on the Gateway West D3 project. So we were here a year ago, met with you guys, just thought we'd come back and say hi.
There's, there's two segments in your county, so, or two different, what we consider to be two different projects as part of Gateway West, so that we, thought it would make sense to bring the whole team to make sure that you had both pieces moving forward. All right, I'll go ahead and get started. So, good morning. We are here today to provide an update on the Gateway West Transmission Line project. This project is a joint partnership between Idaho Power and Pacificor. For those unfamiliar with Pacificor, it is the planning parent company of Rocky Mountain Power, who is a service provider in eastern Idaho. The route we are presenting is from our 2013 environmental impact statement completed by the, by the BLM. We have an indicative center line of the transmission line on BLM and federal lands, as well as a proposed route through private lands, subject to conversations with landowners and obtaining easements. We'll skip introductions because we already did that. We are going to provide an overview of the Gateway West program today and the E and E8 projects, along with our schedule and future milestones. And then finally, we'll talk about what you can expect from us next. Gateway West, of course, is that joint project we just talked about between Idaho Power and Pacificor to build and operate approximately 1,000 miles of new high-voltage transmission lines in Idaho and Wyoming, including 30 miles through Bannock County for Segments E and E8. The project will strengthen the electric reliability of the transmission system and reduce outages, provide critical voltage support to the transmission network, reduce line losses, enhance the company's ability to comply with government-mandated standards, enhance opportunities for future commercial development, as well as provide tax benefits during construction for materials delivered within the county. On the next page, we have our service area overview. Idaho Power is there in blue. You're probably familiar with seeing them, as well as red is the Pacificor service territory. The Gateway West project is a 1,000-mile, 230 and 500 KV transmission line from Windstar Substation near Glen Rock, Wyoming, to the Hemingway Substation near Melba, Idaho. The entirety of Gateway West was analyzed under NEPA to determine environmental impacts. The BLM issued a rod for Segments 1 through 7 and 10 in November 2013, and a right-of-way grant was issued at the same time. Sections, Segments 8 and 9 received a right-of-way grant in April 2018 after further NEPA analysis. So NEPA is considered complete, and we are now in the implementation phase of the projects. Alita, at this time, do you want to provide an update on D3?
Sure. So I do have maps. If you want something more specific to Bannock County, because I realize that this map here is fairly high-level. So I don't think that they got in your guys' original package, but there's some maps for you. So, just as a way of familiarizing your eyes itself with the project, the D3 project is a new 500 KV line. Approximately 15 miles are located in Bannock County, predominantly on private land, 11 miles on private land. We've got .3 miles on BLM land, and then 3.4 miles on the state of Idaho land. Last time I was here, we talked about some of the things we were working on, reaching out to all the landowners to request right of entry, to do the surveys necessary for the BLM requirements, you know, cultural, a lot of bio studies. We have reached out to all of those landowners, and I am happy to say that, have the numbers here. So, specific to Bannock County, we have 36 landowners. 35 of those landowners have granted us right of entry. Again, just to step boots on their ground to do the surveys, and we have one denied landowner. But overall, that's great results. We continue to do those surveys to satisfy all of our requirements. We are planning to go to construction in 2026 with an in-service of 2028. I'm here, if you guys have any questions about that, I mean, if there's anything else, great.
All right. Well, just west of D3, so coming out of the Populus Substation, we have Segment E. This map, if you are on page 7, this map provides an overview of the Segment E route. The 500 KV transmission line will start at the existing Populus Substation and run approximately 616 miles total via both a northern route and a southern route before terminating at the existing Hemingway Substation in Melba, Idaho. Segment E crosses 14 counties. And then, within Bannock County, on the Segment E project, we have both Segments 5 and 7 coming out of Populus Substation. So, the Gateway West Segment E and E8 routes were designed and studied in depth in the NEPA process. NEPA, of course, requires federal agencies to assess the environmental effects of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. Examples, of course, are new construction on federal lands or requiring right-of-way from the federal government or spending of federal dollars. The routes studied during NEPA represent the indicative center line only. So that is somewhere where Alita's side of the project and my project differ. She's a little bit further along. They have more engineering completed than was completed for the E route at this time. So for us, it is just that center line only. Tower locations, access roads, all of that have not yet been determined. On federal lands, this is the basis for Idaho Power's and Pacificor's right-of-way grant from BLM, obtained in, for this portion of the project in 2013. On private lands, this represents a starting point for further studies and conversations with landowners as we work to refine the route. Minor refinement within our previously studied corridor is referred to as micro-sighting, and any major refinement outside of the previously studied corridor may require further NEPA analysis. As we perform additional studies and meet with landowners, the route may lead to minor changes. We do have 616 miles of new 500 KV transmission line for Segment E as a total. Our right-of-way width is 250 feet. We'll be using those self-supporting steel lattice structures. Access to the structures will require both existing and proposed new access, as well as temporary and long-term access routes. Multipurpose areas will be used temporarily during construction. And then, we are anticipating that Populus Substation will need to be expanded. As part of the project, there will also be a new substation constructed near Hanson, Idaho. On the next page is an example of our typical structures. So this is proposed to be steel lattice. It will have a dull galvanized finish, average height from 145 to 180 feet, and the distance between structures is anticipated to be in the 1,200 to 1,300-foot range. Moving on to our Bannock County map. As you can see in front of you, we do have Segments 5 and 7. They are largely parallel to each other and largely parallel to an existing set of lines. We are expecting to require new easements from landowners for these lines, and Pacificor has an approximately 95% success rate in obtaining easements from private landowners. Our mileage is on the next page. I did include the D3 project in there, so you have a complete total of mileage within the county. So Alita mentioned she has 14.7 miles. On E, on Segment 5, we have 16.1. On, on 7, we have 14.1. BLM lands in a total of about 6 miles. Privately owned lands is about 35.6. And then, Alita does have state lands on her project, and Segment E does not. So in total, for Bannock County, our mileage is 40, let's call it 45, because it's 44.9. So about 45 miles. The next page shows our project schedule and future milestones. So we are anticipating construction in, or an in-service date in 2030, no earlier than 2030. Beginning construction no earlier than 2027. And beginning, working with the county for that CUP at the beginning of next year, at the earliest. And then, obtaining right of entry as well for the landowners that are affected on Segment E is likely to begin next year. So our next steps are to initiate right of entry with our private landowners to complete those necessary studies and to continue to work with Bannock County as needed and to obtain that conditional use permit. And then continue to work with the Bureau of Land Management to meet our record of decision requirements. Any questions? And there's some contact information for all of us at the table, as well as our BLM project manager. Not in the room, but BLM is.
I've got one. Well, actually, I've got a couple. But first off, what is the geotech drilling? Is that the footings for the...
That is the, the studies for the structures themselves to make sure that the soils are, can withstand the structures.
Analyzing the soils so that we can develop the foundations to support the structures.
Okay, thank you. And then, I'm not sure where the Populus Substation is in Downey. Where's that at?
Upwards.
Sits just west of Downey, between the freeway and Downey.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, that's what I was thinking.
Sits back away, that connector road between Downey and the freeway. It sits just south of that, just a bit.
Okay. And then, the other question I have is, and we talked about this out in the hallway, Tim. The Lava Ridge project is a big deal. You guys are aware of that, the wind farm. And we're, it's fortuitous that you guys are here today because we're considering doing a moratorium on those type of projects, very similar to what Twin Falls has done. In fact, we're using their moratorium to discuss today. Does anything like that have an impact on what you guys are doing in a, in a negative way? In the creation of your lines?
We, I think, Idaho Power could speak to that. In fact, we provided language suggestions to Twin Falls that their moratorium would meet state code. To answer your question, no. The moratorium does not negatively impact regulated utilities such as Rocky Mountain Power, Idaho Power, in terms of generation resources owned or operated by the company and transmission lines or the connections to, to customers in their service areas.
Okay.
So it wouldn't impact new projects? Like, if that was the language, that's not going to impact what you're doing here?
That's correct.
And the purpose of the moratorium is to not prevent, but to slow down private companies from doing energy projects? And then, my follow-up question is if, if a private entity does an energy generation project, they will tap into this line to deliver power? Or how, what's the...
That's a possibility, in general, generally speaking. They could tap into these transmission lines with their own substations. They could tap into substations such as Populus or other large substations of that nature. We have Forest Station, American Falls, Bitpoint, Jerome Counties. They can, they can build their own generation tie, tie lines, transmission lines into those stations at their expense.
Because that's one of the big knocks against the Lava Ridge project, is all that power goes out of state, doesn't stay in state.
And it, and it was proposed to connect through Idaho Power's Bitpoint Station.
Right.
As just a, just to get on the grid.
Right.
And I think Nate and I will want to provide similar comments to that, you know, to this effect when that agenda item is up. But you're right, it's not to prevent, it's just a, our understanding is it's to pause projects so counties, as they wish, can kind of get a handle on it.
Yeah, that's exactly what we're doing. I had a conversation with the Twin Falls Commissioners last week about this. So, because we have a solar project, I think, in Downey that's looking for some EPA and doing some of their studies right now. And so we're, we're trying to get in a position today to be able to put things in place. So it's not, the, the moratorium is not a stop, it's a slowdown and allow us to catch up. If I understand that correctly, is that your understanding as well?
And we are loosely familiar with the project that is proposed for Downey.
Okay, I like that.
Don't know a lot of details.
I like the loosely familiar.
Don't know a lot of the details, but we are aware of its existence.
Yeah.
It is of concern because, you know, some of these developers coming in and kind of co-locating next to existing large substations, and, and the way that one's proposed, it kind of, kind of landlocks us a whole bit.
Right.
And creates some congestion for getting in and out of the substation. So we definitely would like to have input on, on that as well.
And we'll get a little bit more detail here in a few minutes, but how big is that project? It was, how many acres? Do you have that kind of detail?
I, I don't have the specifics of it. We saw just a preliminary kind of layout, and it looked like they surrounded, you know, the substation on almost...
Three sides?
At least three sides.
Okay.
And so they are aware of this project and the lines, but, yeah, it's, it is a little bit concerning just because kind of competing for the same right-of-way corridors that we're looking to, to maintain to get lines in and out of the substation.
Okay. That's all the questions I had.
I think you said you had 35 out of 36 of the different landowners had given you the right-of-way?
Right of entry.
Right of entry, yeah. That's okay, on D3, yes. So that's the portion of the line coming...
This is to do the survey, I think.
Just to do surveys, yes.
Right, so we would go back for right-of-way, so in order to get the easements. This is just a preliminary step to, to do some additional studies.
Right. And so, anyway, you're going to use the right-of-entry to kind of look at the lay of the land there, and then you might make some adjustments as far as where you're going to actually want the right-of-ways?
Yes, of course, yes. We'll work with, with each of those individual landowners to site those towers, yes.
And so, if you don't obtain a right-of-entry for a particular landowner, would you just go around, or?
So if we don't obtain right-of-entry to do the studies, then we delay those until we do have access to that property.
Through an easement?
Yes, through an easement, yes. So once we do get an easement with, for their property, then per our EIS right-of-way grant with the BLM, we then go in and do those studies. So cultural, for example, we have to do cultural.
Is it possible that some pieces of land, you would never get the right-of-entry?
Yes, of course, yes. Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, and eventually we'll have access to that property, but, yeah.
Just another follow-up question. And just... And just for the record, for those that may be listening and not be familiar with what Lava Ridge is, that is a very large wind farm on BLM property. And it's like, what, 14,000 acres or more than that?
No, it's way more than that.
Yeah, it's like 100,000 acres?
It's 198,000 acres, I believe.
Right. And if that one gets through, there's another one behind it, the Swan Valley or Salmon Falls. Salmon Falls, which again is another wind farm on government property. So the surrounding community really doesn't have a lot of say, per se, in what that is. Are you guys aware, or have you heard of anything like that coming this direction? Or has Twin Falls got the best wind, and that's where it's all going to go?
Other than the solar product that you mentioned, haven't heard much else in Bannock County recently.
So, I mean, we do get interconnection requests, and there is a process for that. But there isn't anything other than these projects with either company that we are aware of at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
And many of these interconnection requests would ultimately fail. Just a bunch of them out there. It's sort of like, you know, ringing the bell to see how things will go. But ultimately, many of them do fail. The strong ones, of course, are going to emerge. Thus the reason for your discussion of the moratorium.
Yeah.
And of course, it's a high bar to get through the BLM.
Right. And our moratoriums are more on private land that we can look at and do something exactly.
Two points I'd like to make. I don't want to speak for BLM, but my understanding is Idaho State BLM, or Idaho's... BLM's Idaho State Office is planning to do some more rigorous review of how these projects kind of fall into order, large-scale energy projects. The second is to the point of interconnection requests. We're mandated by FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, to review these projects. FERC is reviewing how we look at these products in our queue, so to speak, where site control is becoming a more rigorous standard. Site control being permits, you know, leases or purchases of property. So it's... There's going to be less door knockers as we move forward. Or bell ringers.
Bell ringers. Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I would invite any of you that want to stay for our discussion. It'll be coming up here shortly. So we would appreciate it if you would like to stay.
All right, Mayor Nelson. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I'm Mayor Nelson, Rex Nelson, from the city of Downey. Appreciate the opportunity of addressing the Commissioners. I also like to thank my city clerk being here, member of our city council, and several concerned citizens that this has to do with our Free Garbage Day that the county discontinued. I think our clerk has sent you several letters. I assume that you have those, read those, I hope. First one, I'd like to address. The first letter was on May 23rd, 2023. If you've got a copy of that. And this is a letter that I sent out to the citizens of Downey. Just like to read the first couple paragraphs on that. It says, "Earlier this year, following consultation with the county, the city of Downey had initially announced a Free Dumpster Day scheduled for June 10th. However, the city recently became aware through a press release that the county had decided to cancel the Free Dumpster Day. Instead, the county had introduced a Free Disposal Day in May, August, and October on the condition that the residents transport their waste to the Fort Hall Mine landfill." The county commissioners cited the rationale behind this change as being inefficient use of tax dollars, which we greatly disagree with. That... I can understand why you think that's an inefficient use of tax dollars. Upon receiving this updated information, the city conducted a cost analysis to determine the extent of inefficient use of tax dollars, which amounted to approximately $1,800. This number represents expenses that would be incurred if the city were to contract PSI to deliver and remove five dumpsters in Downey. While the landfill usage itself remains free, the county's revised approach shifts the burden of the transportation cost to the residents. The situation becomes significantly different when comparing the distance between Incaum and Pocatello, where residents only need to travel 15 to 25 miles round trip to reach the Fort Hall landmine in Downey, where the round trip stretches to 75 miles. I've also talked to some residents in Swan Lake, which is an additional 10 miles. You know, they would like to get involved in some kind of a dumpster. And I said, "Well, that would have to be brought up, you know, with you guys." But that is a burden on our citizens to travel 75 miles. And one thing that we're concerned with, and I think you've dealt with this in the Pocatello area, is people starting to dump on the roadside. I've already seen on the news where people dump Black Rock Canyon, they dump this. City, correct me if I'm wrong, but I've seen pictures of that. So we're concerned about that. We've seen a little of that, but not a lot. So then this next letter is one that we sent to the county commissioners. And it's a request to reinstate the Free Dumpster Day. It says, "We stand before the Commissioner today to formally present a collection of signatures from our community's concerned citizens. These signatures represent respectfully petition for the reinstatement of the Free Dumpster Day program in 2024, a program that has proven to be highly valuable and effective, particularly in the southern region of our county." I don't know if you've got copies of the petition, but we got well over 200 signatures backing that Free Dumpster Day. That's almost half of the city that signed that petition. And I do believe Commissioner Crowder and Commissioner Moser, you probably heard some kickback on this issue at the Downey Fair, I believe. That was a big concern for the citizens of Downey. By the way, this fair was a great success, but we'll talk about that another day. So appreciate that. So the Free Dumpster Day initiative has served as a vital resource for our residents, offering a convenient means to dispose of bulky items. This convenience is particularly sufficient for those who face challenges in transporting these items over the long 75-mile round trip to the landfill. Furthermore, the program has offered a unique and substantial benefit to our senior citizens who may not have the capacity to take advantage of the Free Landfill Days, making it an indispensable service for our aging population of society. Rex Nelson, Mayor of City of Downey. Last letter is one that we all send to the county commissioners. It was referred to as Free Trash Day. It said, "In recent years, the city of Downey has been proactive in facilitating a Fall Cleanup Day. Every October, enabling Downey residents to responsibly dispose of bulky items that might otherwise linger outdoors during the winter season. Given the cancellation of the Free Dumpster Day and the considerable distance to the Fort Hall landfill, the city of Downey is respectfully seeking the county's consideration in exempting the tonnage fee associated with the use of three dumpsters during the fall cleanup event, which we have already scheduled for the fall." It says, "This request aims to alleviate the burden on residents in the southern end of the county who lack the means to transport oversized items to the landfill, ensuring an accessible and efficient means of refuge disposal for all members of our community. Thank you for your consideration, Rex Nelson, City of Downey." So those are the three letters I'd like you to talk about and help us out. Another letter, several letters from concerned citizens of what it was going to cost. I had one lady, I don't deduct this letter. She put on here, "Where on earth is the Fort Hall landmine?" You ask people that, and I think they think they've got to go to Fort Hall, because I've only been to that dump once myself, anyway. So people were concerned about that. So these are concerns that the citizens of Downey have. We'd like you to talk about this and see if there's something you could do to give us back that day or to help us on our fall cleanup. Also, city clerk in McCammon, I think she got a letter she'd like to read, so.
Are you done now? Are you done now?
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Cassidy.
Well, let me just say, this is a public meeting, not a public hearing, and you're not on the agenda.
This is for the same topic.
Rex Nelson is the one that's on the agenda.
Can I read that letter from Mayor of McCammon?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
There you go. I'm just saying that we can't have everybody come up out of the audience and start.
Understood. Okay, this is Cardine Hall, Mayor of City of McCammon. Subject: McCammon landfill. Commissioners Crowder, Huff and Moser. I know you're faced with difficult decisions as well as budget cuts. I'm sorry we don't have the funds to make everyone happy all of the time. I'm concerned with the closing of the landfill here in McCammon. We have had many phone calls, comments, as well as those that have appeared on Facebook regarding people's concerns with not having a landfill nearby. I have noticed myself that McCammon is acquiring a lot more accumulation of junk and trash if we no longer have three Free Landfill Days here locally. We are able to encourage people to take advantage of this Free Landfill Day to help clean up the city and to make it look better. We even tried to contribute ourselves by having large dumpsters placed at City Hall for one week after the Free Landfill Day, hoping it would help tidy up our community, which it did. We had already ordered the large dumpsters this last May and had posted the Free Landfill Day, which thought would be here in McCammon in our newsletter, only to find out after we had sent the newsletters out that the landfill here in McCammon would not be participating. We still have the large dumpsters delivered. They were overflowing with trash, junk, et cetera. We had to have the dumpsters emptied three times during that week. It could have been emptied twice per day at least, but the dumpsters would fill up immediately. We couldn't keep up with them. The cost for having these dumpsters was $886 for the city of McCammon. We had people from all surrounding areas come and take advantage of our dumpster service. We had 29 comments, and 91 people liked our comments on Facebook regarding our free dumpsters. We had here 1,400 people saw this post. Our number of posts from the city of McCammon is around 100. The Free Landfill Day is very vital service to our community and surrounding areas here in South County. We'd love to see it stay. Seeing how much our free dumpsters were used, it obviously very important to help maintain public health and welfare. People aren't letting so much trash, debris, and waste accumulate in the yards and property. If we can persuade people to clean up and get rid of their junk and waste, it creates a healthy surrounding area. We hope to see continued Free Landfill Days here in South County. Keeping the Free Landfill Days here in South County would make less congestion at the Fort Hall Mine Road landfill. We hope you will consider Landfill Days here in South County. Thank you, Cardine Hall.
Questions? Comments?
I think you're asking for two things here, if I understand this correctly.
We would like one or the other.
Okay, well, let me just state what I'm understanding, and then you can correct me if I don't have this right. But I... When I listen to what you said here, my understanding was that you were asking for, with respect to the fall cleanup, which I think would be later this month.
Right.
You're asking for us to waive the tonnage fee?
Correct.
For this one that you guys... And do you have this one scheduled now?
Yeah, we have that scheduled.
And what's the date of that?
I think...
21st.
What?
21st.
21st of October.
And so how... What's the plan for that? You have a deal worked out with the collection service to take back and forth the dumpsters that would be there in your town?
Right, we've already talked to PSA on that, how that worked out with them. That they'll deliver the three, usually in the spring. It's kind of the Downey plus the outside of Downey. People come and use that. And I think we bring five or six in the spring, and they fill up. In the fall, it's more of a Downey deal for the three dumpsters. We used to just do this once a year, but we decided it was such a good thing to do, we decided to have a fall one. Because people do drive around these small towns, accumulate their fricking junk. And I don't need to tell you, you can drive around any city and see that. So this is some way to stimulate people to clean your dang junk up and to keep our communities clean. And it's been successful. I mean, not entirely, but it's helped.
So the city itself has worked out an arrangement to have... You're going to have a Free Dump Day. You've got the equipment, you've got the transportation.
Yeah, PSA does.
You're asking us to waive the fee to dump the stuff?
Correct, for the fall one.
And then the second thing you're asking for is in 2024 to reinstate the free... Was there just one Free Dump Day that we were doing in Downey?
Originally, we just did one day with that many, in the spring. And then after I got to be mayor, we decided we wanted to do another one in the fall.
So the county... The county was doing one Free Dump Day?
Yeah.
And then you have the second one?
Yeah.
And so were the fees waived for both of these dump days before the meeting where it all got canceled?
Correct, yep. So, I mean, it's not... It's not a large amount of money. That's why I can't see why the county thinks that's an inefficient use of tax funds. It's hardly a drop in the bucket, you know? But it's a principle of things, saying that that's not a good use for the people on the southern end of the county. That's just not true.
With respect to the spring day... So you've got this thing worked out in the fall, where you've got PSI. Is that the name of the company? They're hauling the trash, they're going to have the dumpsters, and the fee is waived. Is there a potential to do the same thing, to set this up with PSI, to do this as far as the hauling and stuff? And then if we waived the tonnage fee, then the cost, then it would pretty much be covered?
Correct.
Between the two of us?
Right, yep.
Yeah. Well, I kind of like that idea. I think it's a... I mean, from what we've seen, obviously, this is a very important service to the people in South County. And I certainly don't want a bunch of trash everywhere in the county. I want it to be as clean as possible. So I would be in favor of waiving the fees for both of the ones going forward, plus the one in October.
For me, I like the partnership. Where the city of Downey's got a little bit of skin in the game. We've got some skin in the game. So, Mr. Chair, I would move that we would waive the tonnage fees at the dump for the Downey days, as discussed here. So the fall collection date and the spring collection date.
Okay. I have no problem doing that. But I think that this discussion goes further, because they got a letter from the city of McCammon. So, I mean, you're making a motion just for Downey here. And so I think it's a discussion that we need to have with the mayors of each of the communities. I would say we waive the fees that they've already got scheduled for that Dump Day, and then we have a conversation.
Well, if I may refer the McCammon letter, and you can nod back there if my question is correct. The McCammon letter was geared a little bit more towards the dump itself and the landfill in McCammon, not necessarily the Free Dump Day, the dumpster program. So I would split the...
She said no.
You said no?
No, I think... So I think they had a Free Dump... If I understand this right, the way this works previously, they had one Free Dump Day that we were handling, getting rid of the fees in Downey, one in Aramo, one in McCammon, and one in Lava, I think.
So what it was, is we had dumpsters that were put to each one of the communities.
Right.
And when we did those dumpsters, they were allowed to bring them to the landfill and dump them for free. And then at the McCammon landfill, which is a transfer point, we had a Free Dump Day. day. So now, what we did instead is we put three free dump days here at the Fort Hall landfill. So people have the opportunity to come three different days during the year to dump. While we was investigating and looking at all this stuff, we found out that the City of Pocatello, without any contracts, without anything else, they had dumpsters that they was bringing up to the, on a weekly basis, up to the landfill and dumping for free. There's just a lot of things that we found out that was happening up there. And to put in perspective of, of all this, last week, we just signed an invoice for two million dollars for remediation of the, of the landfill up here. So there's, there's a lot more parts to this, and, and I'm not downplaying anything anybody said. There's a bigger discussion that needs to happen, and we're in the middle of that. We're in the middle of talking about whether we're gonna keep the landfill open in McCammon, or whether we're, what we're gonna do with that, or just make it a transfer point. We, we cannot afford remediation in another landfill. We just can't. I mean, so, it's a discussion that we've been having, and, and like I say, we're not taking light of it, and we haven't made final decisions on all of it, but we've made some decisions that we felt like we needed to have happen. And when it comes to this past year, we have to take people away from our landfill here to have them drive the trucks, to have them transfer the stuff from McCammon. So we haven't had a full staff for over a year at this landfill. So there's, there's more to it than just, it, it isn't needed. But, but the ability to keep everything running, it's a challenge for us.
So, so let me, let me go back to the McCammon. You guys do not have anything scheduled for the fall like Downey does, is that correct?
No.
Okay. Okay. So the motion will stand, because the McCammon discussion, I still believe, is a separate issue with the landfill, so I will leave my motion as stated.
And can you restate your motion?
The motion is that we approve the joint partnership with the City of Downey, that we waive the tonnages for their dump days in the fall and again in the spring, or going forward like that.
Thank you.
Well, we gotta vote. Okay. Let's see, it's still, I still have a little concern about that. I, I, I'm in favor of doing it for the fall one that they've got scheduled, but I still think that it's a conversation with all the communities on the spring cleanups and, and stuff, because I know the City of Laba does it, the City of Inca does it, and so I think, I think we're a little ahead saying that we're gonna do this in the future all the time. I, I think we have to have a further discussion.
All right. I'll, I'll, I'll change the motion then to make sure we take care of the fall, and then invite you back for a bigger discussion on, ongoing.
I think we have all the mayors of the communities, so we get all the players in that meeting.
So the motion has been amended to only include the fall, and we'll have the rest of the discussion.
Further questions?
No, no, I, I liked your first motion, but I can live with your second motion.
Okay. If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then the other part, it's, it's a discussion that's still...
So would you like a discussion with the other mayors and you guys, and see if we can't work something out for the spring?
That's what'll hap, that's what needs to happen.
Yep. We'll, we'll get that on the books in a couple months here and get that going.
So we look forward to that, that meeting, but it will do my heart good to go back at least and tell our citizens on the southern end that you're willing to help us out at least for the fall.
And, and you can tell your citizens on the southern end, as you implied, to stop dumping their garbage on the side of the road?
Yes.
Because that was your implication, not mine, so you can tell them to stop.
That's a concern, I mean, I have property south of Downey that we had a guy...
Are you the one that said no? Do they want to come through your property?
Yeah. Nothing against McCammon, but this guy was from McCammon who drove south of Downey, found a wash that went through my field and was dumping garbage in my wash. I don't even know how this guy moved...
So he went further, going that direction and coming to the landfill?
Yeah, well, about the same, but, uh, anyway, he stood for thought, so, anyway. So we can go ahead and you'll waive that for the fall.
Yeah, we'll do that, we'll let, we'll let the landfill know. Brayden, will you make sure?
Yeah, we talked to PSI driver, Pedron is good friend with the lady at the dump, so it shouldn't be an issue.
Good. That's still a sore spot with us, Mayor.
Right.
Pedron.
She loves where she's at, so...
I know, I found that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Scott?
Scott Crowther, Event Director, Business Manager. I'd say we have two contracts to go through with you guys. The first one is for the Idaho National Guard, and, uh...
First, our Calvin Bonds on, how's it going? Thanks again for the use of the parking lot to land the Blackhawks. It was a really good event for us. We're just requesting, it's Building B, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Building B on Sunday, November 5th, to conduct, to use as like an admin building for us. During that drill weekend, we have a, our, our battalion-wide medical processing, and it happens at the armory, so it dislocates about a hundred and fifty soldiers where we don't have a place to drill, and in the past, we've used Building B, and we're just asking if we can have the fee waived for that.
And, uh, just, just from a staffing standpoint, we give it to them clean, and we always get it back cleaner than, than we give to them. These guys do a really good job of taking care of our equipment, so.
Okay, well, whatever we can do to support this, so, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the waive, fee waiver for the Idaho National Guard as requested.
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Next year, we wanna fly in those Blackhawks.
Right.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, the second event that we have is something we've actually been trying to do for a couple of years. Um, we've, we've kinda talked a little bit about it, but this is Healthy City USA and the Gate City Young Professionals would like to come and rent a pavilion from us, and they'll pay the full fee to rent the pavilion, but they would actually like to do a polar plunge in November. I am suggesting that they push it back to January, because that seems like a lot more fun.
A polar plunge is not in November. Why don't you call it, who called it something the other day?
The water is not cold enough in November to be a polar plunge.
It's just a cool...
It's a brown bear, it's a brown bear plunge. That's what Shane had told me.
But we, we don't have a fee for, for the use of the, of the lakes, uh, but because it's a, an event like this, it doesn't restrict anybody else from using the venue. People still wanna fish just when they can, uh, but because this contract includes an area that doesn't have a fee, we wanted to bring it before the commission, we just got a good rule for this.
Why did you pick November?
Uh, so it didn't, uh, it wasn't iced over yet, so I don't wanna have to dig.
Okay. Well, it is a brown bear plunge, not a polar bear plunge.
Yes.
So, my only question is, is there something signed so the county has zero liability?
So I actually am working with Porton Medical Center to have the acute rescue there as a safety measure, um, just in case any injuries happen, um, so we'll have on-site.
I think that our signage probably covers us, and I'm saying probably, because I can't look at Brian, but we have swimming all the time, and we don't have anybody sign a waiver that swims. And so the, the signage does speak to swimming at your own risk, and, and quite frankly, people could go swim on this date regardless without anything signed, and so, and I don't know how deep you guys, you guys aren't jumping off the docks, I would assume, so it's probably gonna be a, you know, waist-deep, maybe a little bit higher. So, um, but, but that's, I think that, it may, it could be different at the event, but the contract may speak to that as well, insurance piece.
I just want our, ourselves covered, uh, since we get more and more events like this.
Uh, you could confirm all that with Brian.
I can, yeah. And I can make sure if, if not, we can probably get it together, uh, I imagine it's one of the waivers that we currently have, uh, that we could just modify to get out, that just indemnifies the county of any...
As long as we have something along those lines, as Commissioner Moser was saying, and you've confirmed that with legal, then...
Yes, good with that.
Okay?
So, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the polar bear plunge, uh, so we can authorize signature, and then authorize the event to go forward once we have the liability confirmed with legal. How's that?
Have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck.
Thank you.
All right, Judge.
Right. Didn't realize this is this formal today.
Yeah, anytime there's three commissioners, it's formal.
Yeah, it gets formal. Well, good morning to each of you.
Good morning.
Go ahead and introduce yourself, and tell us a little bit about yourself, and...
Sure. So I'm David Penrod, just newly appointed judge, and magistrate judge here in Bennett County. I've pretty much grew up here since I was a little boy in Pocatello, so I moved here when I was probably in kindergarten or first grade. Um, I've got a wife and four children. My wife Stephanie's a dental hygienist, she teaches up at ISU in the clinic up there. My children are all grown and one married, I got one grandchild, and, but I've got three daughters and a son. My son's in Texas, and my three daughters are all down in Utah. So, um, that's a little bit about me. I practiced law privately for twenty-two years. Um, started out with Brent Morgan, uh, well, actually, I started off clerking for Judge Woodland, um, so I clerked there, then I worked for Brent Morgan for a while, then I went and worked with Dave McGuire and Dave Crass, um, and then it became McGuire and Penrod. And then I started my own firm, Penrod and Swenson, with a, a law partner who I went to law school with, and then we practiced together from 2014 to present. Um, and so, yep, I've been on the job about a month, and it's been good. I don't have to worry about billable hours, and I actually have time to think about a problem, and I don't, I'm not interrupted by all sorts of emergencies, so it's actually been refreshing that way, so it's, it's been good so far.
Well, we're excited for the public defense to go to the states, so we don't have to worry about billable hours.
Yeah, that's true.
So what courtroom are you in?
Uh, three twelve, right above, so three twelve.
And how is your courtroom?
It's, uh, well, when I got hired, they got me some new chairs, they got some new chairs for the attorneys, which are, I told them that was my first priority, even though they're not my chairs, they were my chairs to sit in, they were very uncomfortable. Um, but they're switching those out, and, um, I noticed that they're, they're improving some of the courtrooms, which is great, so, but it's, the sound system's great in it, and it works adequate. So I know there's plans to kinda update and refresh all of the courtrooms, which is, I think is good. I, I think it's important for when people come to court that they feel like they're in a place that's special, you know, I mean, that's part of the feeling of a courtroom, and it's a deterrent, I think, when you, when you go to a place that feels significant, and then people take note. So I think it's just part of the, kind of the, the process, so I'm glad that the, you know, the county's doing that, I think it's, it's much needed.
Are you assigned yet to any special courts?
Not yet. They, I, I was told that there's something in the works, but may not be until next year.
We've, uh, we enjoy the opportunity, when they have their graduations and stuff, of being informed so we can participate. Questions?
Remind me who your parents are.
Uh, Kay and Don Penrod.
Yes, I knew, I knew them, good, good people, so I'll defer that down to you as well, or transfer that down to you, so...
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
I appreciate that, they are, they are very kind and good people.
Yeah.
Taught me well.
Mr.?
I'd just say welcome, it's good to have you here.
Yeah, look forward to, to being around you and seeing you often, appreciate what you do.
Well, you're welcome to come by anytime.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
All right, Hal.
Good morning, Commissioner. Hal Jensen, Planning Director. I have with me Tristan Berklin, Assistant Director.
Excuse me, Hal.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, would it be all right if we invited some of our power people up from our previous discussion?
Yeah, they're, they're more than welcome to.
Okay, Idaho Power, Rocky Mountain Power, whoever else from the power companies that would like to participate in this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We only requested a few minutes, so I'll be very brief. Since 2020, we've had a number of companies from all over the United States. Quickly, I can think of seven different discussions that I've had in a period of four years relative to solar farms. And, uh, we don't have an ordinance currently in place for a solar farm, and so after consulting with legal, the mechanism that we have in place is for a conditional use permit, which leaves it basically wide open. And, uh, looking at some of the potentials and other conversations, I know that Commissioner Huff had conversations at Idaho Association of Counties relative to some of the other counties that had concerns, and you have before you a moratorium, a potential moratorium that we would ask be placed until an ordinance could be written and adopted. We are a big target, by the way, because we have that substation in South County, and it's an easy place based upon the fact of the topography, it's fairly flat, it's easy for them to go in and do a large farm and then connect to that substation. There's a fair amount of work that each of these companies do in their conversations with, um, the power company relative to connecting, and to be quite honest, we would probably have an application in place had that not become such a long-drawn-out process for the applicant, or potential applicants, so, anyway, if you have any questions for them, I would be more than glad to ask you to default to them, because I'm...
So, I do, so somebody puts in an application, are you required to take their power?
We're required to review the application, whether it's for an interconnect, um, and then separately, we do a power purchase agreement. If, if we were to, want to purchase that at a fair value, applicants sometimes would just say, we wanna just connect through your facilities and transmit it elsewhere. They might have a power purchase agreement, another state, another utility, uh, I, you know, I think there's been cases of overlap where, uh, you know, where we share facilities such as substations or transmission lines, and they have to go through both companies to, uh, for the interconnect process.
Well, I know when Tim's been here before, you've talked about California, and the farms down there, come in this direction and different, different directions there.
Yeah. One of the things you'll get a lot of is distributed generation across the country now, more and more, we're seeing that happen, so you'll see solar wind projects happen across the country. And, and yes, we're required to, to receive those applications and consider those, and there are federal requirements that we have to live under. But, uh, these interconnect agreements are complicated, they are, uh, they are agreements that are intended to produce a viable product, a viable relationship and generation. I would just say too, that, that as, and Idaho Power is business category as well, as members of the Western Energy and Balance Market, all these utilities join together and share generation and transmission capacity, so we're not having to build additional lines, so you don't have parallel lines, like we talked about earlier, so you don't have thirteen different lines going across Idaho. That's why these partnerships are important like this, but, but these utilities coming together and then considering these distributed generation projects, it's important for us, it's important for you as communities, but, but we also want to make sure we have excellent relationships with counties and cities, with the federal government, with state government. If, if nothing gets done unless we do, right, it just doesn't. If we're at odds with each other, it's important that we have a good relationship, and, and oftentimes, that, that happens through conversations like this, where we come to an understanding about, you know, what is needed. There's no doubt that, that the demand curve is increasing with artificial intelligence, with new data centers, with electric vehicles, all of that's increasing. So we know that demand is, is, is going to continue, and it's not going to subside. So, but it's important for them to...
Is there concerns about a moratorium?
We can probably speak to what we had in Twin Falls, but I think the duration of the time, it wasn't going to put us in any kind of significant situation and it seemed like that group had done a lot of homework. I know that, I think their moratorium is past end of August. They already have, everyone that's going to their planning commission in two weeks. It'll probably be before the commissioners, before the end of the year at some point. So I, I don't know of any difficulties it's caused us, and we have always had input along the way, so that's been very helpful.
And I, there's no concern per se with the moratorium as long as, you know, something comes out of the right, a better, improved ordinance. We would, Idaho Power, and I can't speak for Pacific Corp., but, you know, if we can help, as subject matter experts in these fields, you know, if we can provide input along the way, we would appreciate that opportunity. Not, not to try to make it, you know, favorable to us, but just in general, right.
And you helped draft the one in Twin Falls. Did you state that earlier?
We did. With their, with their moratorium, we provided some draft of comments. There's a Idaho State Code that basically says, you know, you can't prohibit a regulated utility from securing or building their own resources or their own facilities to transmit electricity. It's for all types of utilities though, it's natural gas, electricity, water.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
The whole thing? Yeah. We provided input to Twin Falls County and that input was included in the draft of Bennett County ordinance language, moratorium ordinance language, that made it so the moratorium ordinance language was, did not conflict with Idaho State Code. Idaho State Code essentially saying that counties or cities cannot outright prohibit regulated utilities such as Idaho Power or Intermountain Gas or Water Utility from providing their resources and connecting to their customers.
Does the code say anything about private entities that want to generate power?
So the code, the moratorium is focused in on, on private entities. The State Code or the?
The State Code does not.
It does not.
Okay. And the section you're referring to is in Section 4 of the moratorium where it addresses not to address, or not to.
I apologize.
No, you're fine. I'm just helping answer Commissioner Crowder's question that identifies the State Code, but it does specifically identify the public utilities in there.
So in regards to this particular issue, it would, it would assist my office to have time to put together a good ordinance. We currently have nothing relative to wind power, solar panel, power, et cetera. And as I stated before, because of that substation that sits in South County, we have a big target on our back. To give you an idea, we're talking 2,500 to 2,800 to 3,000 acres in three different proposals that have been brought to our office as they are starting their due diligence. I'll ask Tristan to just speak to the time concerns and the reasoning why that's in the moratorium and potentially ask Idaho Power for any input relative to that language.
So in the submittal that you have, I had highlighted in yellow those timelines because I wanted to make sure that we had sufficient time to create an ordinance that is not going to be conflicting with current ordinance, that's not going to make more of a mess than what no ordinance would make. I do actually have a rough draft of a solar ordinance that I'm hoping to present to the Planning Council on our October 18th council meeting. But I would also like time to have our rewrite, our ordinance rewrite advisory committee look at it, where they are all volunteers. I would like to give them at least a couple of months to review and get comments back to us because they are doing it out of the kindness of their hearts and in their own time, so I don't want to have to put too much of a rush on them for reviews. So anytime that you guys think is sufficient for us to get this done and get a good ordinance in place.
Then the next component to that is that it would behoove my office to schedule a community meeting in South County. I know that the solar companies have gathered at times and had conversations with the communities in the Downey area, but I think it would behoove us to have a good conversation about what the aesthetic is going to become as we move these types of projects potentially forward. Some of them want to potentially purchase the land that they would place panels on. Others would like to lease the land that they would be set upon. There's a, there's a greater conversation than just this group right here, and I think we would, we would be, we wouldn't be kind neighbors to our constituents in South County without having their input. Just an FYI.
Mayor Nelson, would you come up for just a second? Mayor Nelson, would you come up?
I have agenda for this.
It's true. You're providing testimony. Have you, have you participated in any discussions like Hal was talking about from any of these solar projects to come down and talk to the community?
Yeah, this spring, we had a company out of, they were out of Houston, Texas, contacted me, wanted to know if we, because we, we have about 800 acres down there and it was a lady called me, wanted to know if we'd be interested in installing solar panels on our property. And it's substantially, you know, big money, a lot more than what CRP or Safe Payment makes. And, and I said, well, I need to know more about it, but the first thing I said, have you contacted the county? You know, and they said, no. And I said, well, you know, that's one hurdle you're going to have to get through. But anyway, they, her and another guy flew out here this summer and met with me and my two, my two sons. And in fact, I've decided we have an LLC, so on my own property, I said I didn't want solar panels on there, but my sons are interested. And then that company has started drawing the contracts up. And then I said, you've got to go through FSA, you know, because that's another ball of wax, you know, that you have to deal with, you know, because that property's in the SAFE program right now. But so, and I said, have you got any other properties down around Downey that are interested in it? And they said, yeah, they had talked to a couple of other property owners that was interested in it. But as we speak, they're drawing up, trying to draw up a contract, so that's all I can tell you.
Okay. Well, I, I want it to be clear that this moratorium isn't an attempt to stifle economic development or prevent citizens such as yourself from selling your land and doing what you want, but it's a, it's a bigger attempt to at least try to manage this growth appropriately so that the community as a whole has an opportunity to have some input on what we do going forward.
Management of that growth really should have input from an ordinance, though.
Correct.
And that's why we would ask for six months, nine months, maybe even a year, depending on all of the players that it takes to put a good constructed document in place.
Okay. I don't know if I'm quite willing to go a year, but I think the six month is appropriate, at least to get us going down the road and see if we can get it done.
I have a couple more questions. Mayor, so this, the moratorium that we're looking at here is six months. Do you have any concerns with having a moratorium for six months while this type of program is evaluated? As the mayor of Downey.
Well, I have some, of course, you know, it's just kind of, I mean, I really, from what I understand, they're interested in that down there because of that, our substation right there, of course, that they want to pipe into that. So, yeah, we have some, you know, concerns about it, but it, right now, it seems like it's kind of a vague deal to me. I mean, I haven't talked to the county. It looks to me like it's not going to happen tomorrow, of course, because they want to come on your property and they want to do studies on your property, you know, first. But so, and this lease was, they wanted to lease your property for 20 years, so.
So it doesn't sound like you have any strong concerns about pausing for a few months to study this.
No, yeah.
And clarifying things. Is that right?
Right.
And I had another question for you guys as well. Are you able, let's say somebody builds a solar farm, can you reject allowing them to connect to your operation?
No.
You cannot reject?
No, the, you know, the FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission doesn't allow us to reject. Basically, what, what they do when they applied our system to interconnect, this, again, power purchasing is separate. What we do is we do a full study, full system study of what the cost would be for them to connect. That cost may be such that they walk, right? I mean, we're talking, you know, for, for something in the ballpark to connect into a 500 kilovolt substation, a transformer is roughly 30 to 40 million dollars. You know, that doesn't include the apparatus that surrounds it, the lines, and then if we have to do upgrades, say in AmeriFalls, a drone, or Pacific Corp. has to do upgrades of Populus or Jim Bridger Station over by the coal plant out in Wyoming. So sometimes that cost, that's kind of the death knell for some of these projects.
So really, these projects, it makes no sense from a business standpoint, if I was a private investor in such a thing, to go forward with a project until I understood your, your costs and was insured of being able to connect at a reasonable cost and sell the power.
Well, I'm not allowed to speculate, but I would, I would say that would be sound advice.
Okay.
I'm not able to.
Mr. Crowder, one other item.
Yes, sir.
The mayor made a point that the lease was for 20 years, and I'm going to say that Tristan's probably the youngest of this table that might be around in 20 years when something may need to be decommissioned. And it makes sense in that ordinance that we have the teeth and the legal authority to be a participant in that decommissioning, should that occur.
Well, I can tell you.
And that's why, and that's just one of the aspects of why I think we should, we need to have a really good type.
Yeah, and then to that point, I can tell you, that would be my number one concern. You get these big windmills built and things of that nature, and then they're abandoned and, well, who's stuck with that? So.
So those are the items of why we're asking, not that we want to say no, but it's a, it's a bigger conversation and in the process of writing an ordinance, it gives us the opportunity to then have greater conversation with the constituency in the South.
Another question for you, Commissioner Huff. Is this draft, were you involved in making this draft? No. Twin Falls sent this to us and I forwarded it to Hal and Tristan and they reworked it.
Is it essentially the exact same language that we have in?
I believe it is.
Okay, because I read that one, but I did not recall seeing this in the packet today for whatever reason.
Well, this was an amendment to our agenda. And it just went on there. And for that reason, I wouldn't, I don't want to vote on it today. I'd rather vote on it on Tuesday when it's regular agendaized item instead of amended.
And I pushed it for today so I could be here for the discussion because I would not be here on Tuesday. So I wanted to get my position and my thought process on the record when you guys voted on Tuesday.
Yeah, and I, I'll just tell you that I am in favor of doing something like this, but obviously I want to read the thing before I vote on it to find out what's in it, so.
And the other added benefit is the fact that Pacific Corp. and Idaho Power representatives are here, so we also have the opportunity to.
I think this is.
Extract some information in a very brief meeting, so it worked out fortunate for us today.
One last question. Why 10 megawatts? What is it about that number that makes it a relevant number?
Yeah.
I just remember initially it had no definition. It just said, large-scale energy. So our big question, what does that mean? I think they were trying to not include some of the ag projects that connect to the pivots and such and their, you know, pumps, and that's kind of a good size for them.
Okay. Okay. I was comfortable with that size, but I, I didn't get an answer from them as to why 10 megawatts was the number, and so I thought you guys might have some insight into that.
And that's part of that greater study on our end of what makes sense to particular operations and other aspects. Where, where is that delineation? So I don't know that we've been through that enough to have that knowledge to draw an intelligent conclusion on the language in the ordinance, so.
Okay. Well, again, gentlemen, thank you for staying and providing your input. Appreciate that. Mayor, thank you for, for answering. And Mr. Chairman, thank you for allowing me to put this on so we could have this discussion today.